Hi, I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 3rd meeting of the Town Council and we'll begin as always with the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, first thing on our agenda is public forum and seeing as how there is no public in the audience, I'm going to close public forum at 7:01. Next thing is to, for the Town Council to accept the minutes of our March 20th meeting, so I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes of that meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 20th, 2019 meeting.
Second.
Any comments, changes, questions?
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Sanders.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Keighley.
Aye.
Council Cant.
Aye.
Council Brown.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
So then the report of the Town Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First item on my report is that the Town Council's annual goal setting session will be on Wednesday, May 8th, 2019, starting at 6:00 PM in the Town Hall Auditorium. Rick Albers of our insurance provider, Primex, will be facilitating again this year and have distributed the goals from last year to the council. The next item is that the Chair and I met to discuss ways that we can reach out to constituents better and in a less formal arena, we came up with an idea modeled on one that other committees do and have like coffee with the Chair on a quarterly basis. This will allow people to ask questions and we can get answers for them or further information at another time. One of the goals of the Energy and Environment Committee was composting program for the town. The Director of Public Works has worked with the composting company, Mr. Fox, to begin a composting program at the transfer station today it began. There's some information on what you can and cannot compost in my report and it's been in the newsletter for, since we found out, so it has started today. The next item with the Joint Town Council School Board Meeting, that April 10th meeting is going to be postponed till May. The, we want to get the report from the consultants on the financial services completed first and that won't start until the end of this week, so won't be ready for next Wednesday. So we're going to just postpone that till May. Again, just to remind everybody in the public that the New Market will have throngs of runners and spectators in the community this Sunday for the annual running the Great Bay Half Marathon and 5K. This is a great opportunity to showcase our beautiful community. I don't know if anyone noticed, we have a lot more banners this year downtown to welcome people, we want to get it up before the race. And while doing so, there will be some road closures and temporary delays. Downtown will be closed shortly before the 11:00 AM start and will reopen about 3:00 PM after the race is completed. Signs are displayed throughout the town with more information. They're up already, you can see yellow signs that says this road will be closed or heavy temporary closure because of a race. The roads that are impacted are South Main Street, B Street Extension, Elm, Cedar, Piscasket, Salmon, Beach, Dame, Bay Road, Cushing, Lumberlin, Lamprey, Sanborn, Main Street. The next item is that we've been working to look into the possibility of restaurants being able, with sidewalk seating, to be allowed to serve alcohol outdoors. Many communities have that, City of Dover, City of Portsmouth. The Police Chief and I, as well as the Town Planner and the Code Enforcement Officer, reviewed the current ordinances and have discussed with the State Liquor Commission to see what we need to do to make that a possibility. We've been hearing from some business owners in the downtown area, it's kind of odd that one business across the street can have it outside alcohol because they're on private property, but one across the street cannot. We're just trying to figure a way to do that. We should have an ordinance for the first ring for the council at the next meeting. Some of the things though that might have to be in a delineated area, they would have to be have a bona fide meal with it, so you can't just be sitting out there having alcohol and some other regulations that go with it, so we'll have that before the council. A couple of things that are not on my written report, I just want to give an update. We are working on our continuity of operations plan that used to be called the continuity of government plan, which is the, as the council knows, we finished our emergency operations plan, this is sort of the next step of, okay, after the emergency happens, how do we continue to function? We do look at everything from if Town Hall or a major building burnt down, if we didn't have power for a certain amount of time, to what happens if the Town Administrator is not around for some reason or another? Well, how do we trigger things to happen to replace that individual? So we're working on that with all the department heads at this point. And secondly, it's with mixed feelings that I am announcing the retirement of our longtime Information Technology Director, Doug Pullman, who indicated that he's going to retire at the end of the fiscal year. He's been working for the town for many, many years, he's a one-man show, so anything that happens, he's at. We're working on a transition. First thing we're doing is having an audit down of all our technology to see what is there, what we need, what do we have too much of, what may be old. I've asked for him to bring in a private company to look at that and then we'll determine the next step before the end of the fiscal year. And that is all I have tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any comments, questions for the Town Administrator?
Just thank you to all of his service.
Yeah.
So it's June 30th?
Yep.
Any other comments? I have a couple.
Okay.
So one, it was just about the outreach, because I thought that this would be a good opportunity for us to discuss it as a council and I didn't know how people wanted to proceed with that. If we, I mean, I would even say if maybe two counselors wanted to take it and run and kind of plan it and bring it back, I mean, that's one option. Or, I mean, I could certainly do it with the Town Administrator, however, people feel comfortable moving forward with it. It's, I'm completely flexible. I do like the idea, I mean, in a general sense of meeting people where they're at, you know, wherever that may be and, and I guess in the way I thought of the program would be quarterly at most. I don't think more than that is feasible, to be honest. And maybe mixing it up, you know, like so it's not always in one location, not always one time of day, just to try to, again, meet people where they're at. I mean, you know, I love the idea of, you know, coffee with the counselor or coffee with the council, however that may be. Even at the senior center is an option, so it doesn't necessarily have to be in a restaurant or a business, but mixing it up with different businesses is a nice way to outreach to the business association also.
If I may. So we'd actually talked a little bit about this via email and one of the things that I thought as, just as a member of the public, but also someone who was running for Town Council at the time, you and Casey had hosted the Mindful Monday event at the Stone Church and as simple as that was, I thought it was an incredibly effective way of outreach. So I'd like to see if we could work together to try to do something like that, but also on the personal level, you may have noticed on the Town Council website, if you click on my name, I have now posted that I'm available to meet on Wednesdays and my phone number and email are listed there, so if there are members of the public who want to meet with a counselor, they have my contact information and they know a day that I'm available. Not, I think it's helpful to make it known that we are available to meet and I think that for me personally was just a very simple way of doing it. But if there's anybody who wants help in planning something, I'm more than ready to, you know, jump on board and do something with folks.
I kind of like your idea of having a couple of people kind of take it and run with it and plan it, or plan how it's going to go. I don't know if anybody's available to do that. But I think then we can kind of streamline it, even though it's only quarterly, I mean, not only quarterly, that's a lot for all of us, but, but it's quarterly, but then it can kind of streamline and build upon. So I don't know if anybody's interested, so.
And if it's quarterly, it's really just one time a year.
Right.
For each counselor.
Each person.
For each person, each individual person, because we couldn't have more than two, or right, two, three.
Can't have more than four, you can't have more than three.
Can't have more than three, because then it's quorum. I mean, people can be in the audience for sure, but it, you know, it just becomes a meeting and then obviously we want to avoid that. So this keeps it informal and allows people to ask questions just in a, in a, in a more informal way, although I would think we would want to add a little bit of structure, so we would want to be careful.
Yeah, I like the quarterly idea and I think that, I think personally it makes sense to rotate between counselors, but if we had a general framework, I think different people ideally should come, or different constituencies should come each time, so there should be some basic like
Right.
Government 101 type thing and then build, just so they have a basic groundwork. And then I think quarterly would be awesome and I think rotating locations and time of day would be awesome too.
So it's not a meeting, but do you want to consider whether some locations it could be televised or is that not appropriate?
I, I don't think it would.
For people who can't come but are interested?
My suggestion would be if you want to do a televised one, do a separate one that is televised.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think most of these should, because a lot of people don't come to meetings because they are televised.
Okay.
Right.
And this is an opportunity for it, somebody could ask a question.
Right, and ask a question that they may feel uncomfortable asking in a public setting, because, yeah.
I think we'll have to work on that.
Did I get the sense that you might or Zach or Counselor Dumont?
I, I will put my name forward as assisting. My question though is bouncing off of Counselor Finch, are we looking for maybe potentially coming back with a couple themed ideas? So like a Government 101 or maybe what's on the agenda type of meeting, what we've gone over the past few months and what the council is looking to do in its year in line with its goals, stuff like that, or?
If I, I would like to, I think Government 101 is probably a good one to use. Another one I think we're going to have to address soon, is in one of these sessions, is the revaluation of the properties going on right now. So people are going to get their new assessments at some point in time.
Right.
And they're not going down like they did the last time, so we're going to hear a lot more people this time. It could be a way that we can explain the purpose of the revale, how they do it and to get through refrigeration out there.
And then with February, March leading up to the like town warrant and explaining what's on there because it can vary, I think that was helpful, because it was like town or Government 101 and then why the warrant looks the way it does, because people have questions about it.
Yeah, why they can't bring their pet project to warrants and why it's vegetarian.
Yeah, it's almost like I could take that when I do for the council.
Right.
Change it a little and say, look, here's a little presentation of what our former government is versus others that they may be used to.
And, well, and Counselor Finch and I had, I mean, that's basically what we did, it was very similar to the presentation that you had, just did for us. And I think I, you must have it, do you still have it?
Yeah, we still have it, it's in Google Drive and I think we used a chunk of that for when the students came in from the high school too, so yeah.
Right, so that's available for, you know, people to tweak and, and we work.
Yeah, that's great, kind of build off of.
And I think, you know, just like, I mean, who would have known last year that, that Church Street would have had such a big issue? So like you just never know what the issues are going to be anyway, so who knows what a year from now or six months from now people will be interested in. It hopefully, it might vary.
I'd be, be happy to join you two as well because with summer around the corner, that's probably when a lot of the planning will go on and I happen to be off most of the summer, so. I'd be happy to help out.
So who wants, so who's going to take that on? Is it Helen and Counselor Finch or Sanders, the three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
She's not a quorum.
No.
Can't have any law more though.
What's that?
No more than three.
Yes.
Thank you for doing that, all three of you. And then my other comment was just about the composting, so I wanted to just mention that this was something that the Energy and Environment Committee worked hard on over the last year and you may remember that we presented to the council quite a while ago and so it was really exciting to hear that. And we presented to the DPW Director, Rick Malaski, also during that time. And so it was exciting to hear that he had taken it further and dealt with Mr. Fox and we now have a composting program that started today. I do believe that there will probably be some kinks that will need to be worked out as, as the program progresses. And one of the things that I know that I myself, as someone who's been talking about this for a long time, would love to know sort of, at some point maybe we could talk to Rick about this, is like what metrics he's going to be looking at as far as to determine if it's a viable program for the town long-term. And if it's, if it's being used and by how many people, you know, I don't know how he's going to keep track of all of that information, but it'll be really helpful to know that moving forward, so. So it's exciting, so you can bring all of your compostable items. There's a, the list is in the report and there's, it's available on the website and in the newsletter and posters throughout town. It's also available at the transfer station, so you can bring your own bucket and dump directly into the bins that are there or in a compostable bag, no plastic, no straws, nothing like that, so.
And we don't require a sticker for vehicles to get in there too, because I've talked to renters.
No, it's completely free.
Yeah, so I've talked to renters that are, they're like, I don't go to the transfer station, but I would go if, I don't need a sticker, but it's completely free, yeah.
So, those were the only comments that I had.
Let me just put a caveat.
Yeah.
The composting is completely free. Using the transfer station, there's certain charges for, I want to make sure.
Right, right, yeah, yes, yes.
But there's no sticker.
Yeah, and, and it's not, and I'll, another caveat, it's not free. It is, there is no cost to residents for this program. It does cost money, but hopefully in the end it will, it'll all even out.
I was just going to ask, are you going to be able to have some metrics around that?
Yeah, that's what I had to add, yeah.
It's going to take a lot of people doing it before I think you'd notice like a lot, because it's like measured by tons, you know? And so it's, just as a basic number, it's a hundred dollars a ton to take the compost out, whereas we pay a hundred and sixty-eight for the municipal trash. So it would be, you know, for, to see a difference would be like, you'd probably need a thousand ton or whatever, you know, you'd need a huge difference, so.
That's like a thirty percent savings.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. I mean, in the long run, I mean, in the long run.
It's not going to be six months.
Yeah.
Before you see maybe, because it'll, it'll be a year or two.
This is a long-term project.
It is.
Yeah.
Do we have some goals in that regard or, or just hoping people will participate?
First we get it out there to hope and then we see how it works.
The Energy and Environment Committee had discussed some longer-term things like with the school and stuff, but a lot of it was kind of like, well, let's get this one thing done and then
Sure.
You know, with the school being under construction, that kind of, we weren't going to get into that at all, but we had, we had discussed it, so there was some ideas.
I figured you did. All right, that's great. I've been saving my steps since I saw the flyers.
There you go.
I'm ready.
So if there are any other comments, we can move on to committee reports? None?
I've got a little bit actually, I wasn't sure if anybody else. For Conservation Commission, I just wanted to mention a couple of quick things. Heron Point Gate should be fully installed very soon, hopefully within the week. And kind of coinciding with the fact that the gate will be working again, on Saturday, April 20th, there's a volunteer cleanup day at Heron Point from 9:00 AM until noon. Gate should be working, so we can kind of celebrate that and then we're just asking volunteers to come and help pick up debris that's fallen over the windy weather we've had over the past year or so. So yeah, so Saturday, April 20th. And the other thing I was going to mention is that the Conservation Commission has both a Facebook page now and an Instagram page and they're also hosting, or we're hosting between now and October, a photography contest to take pictures of residents that want to take pictures of local conservation lands. We want them to submit them to us and then we're going to display those photos at the Stone Church in November, I believe, so, but the details are on the Facebook and the Instagram page. That's it.
Can people just show up to the cleanup on the 30th?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I'll just mention in brief, the Budget Committee met again after such a lovely break. Mr. Mickey Burns has been made Chair, some of you might know him. And we've got a good group of folks, a lot of newcomers, a number of people who, you know, we haven't seen involved before in the town. So I, I think it's, when I say in the town, I mean like town government level, I think it's very great to have that level of public interaction and I think that the new members are going to be, going to provide a lot of helpful insight that maybe we haven't had the past couple of years, so, good things coming.
Is it fully?
I believe we are full.
Oh, you are, okay.
Yeah, at our previous meeting, we had had an individual who did not show up, but apparently there are issues getting in contact with him and then I think for whatever reason he is no longer on, I believe he, I'm not really sure what happened. But we have another gentleman, Mr. Matthews, who should be there for the future meetings now, taking that spot.
Great. And the Energy and Environment Committee met last night, so it was timely and we talked about a few things. One was obviously the composting program. And then, and another thing that we talked about was we have an upcoming School Board and Town Council meeting at some point. And one of the things that we actually talked about last night was doing a presentation about composting in the school. So, and it's something that I talked to the School Board Chair about and he thought that that was fine. Just to let them know kind of what our findings have been and some of the information that we have. And, and some of the numbers are just staggering about the waste that's produced per pupil in a school is just unbelievable. So, so you have that to look forward to at the, at the joint meeting. We discussed solar a little bit and then charging, electric car charging stations is going to be another focus over the next year. And then we discussed the glycer, glycer feet at length, so. And that's something in, at our May meeting of the Energy and Environment Committee, we'll be meeting with Rick Malaski and the representative from our current Municipal Weed Control Agency. So, and then we still have, so we're down to three members, including myself and three and a half, because we had somebody who has put their name in, but will, they won't be on the Town Council agenda for approval until our next meeting, so, so I called it a half. So that's Peter Nelson and so then there's three more positions that are available. So if you know anybody, we, you know, we have reached out to some individuals. Hopefully we'll get some more people who put in an application and we'll get all staffed up.
Should they get in touch with you for the application or?
Oh, they can fill it out right here.
Yeah.
Yeah. If they have any questions.
Yeah.
About the committee, they can certainly get in touch with me or you.
Yeah.
I mean, you probably, you know, you know, you've been on the committee for the last year, so. Yep, so that's any other committee reports? Great, then moving on to old business. So resolutions, we have resolutions in the second read or third reading. Motion to approve resolution, or I'd accept a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-35 in support of CACR8 local self-government.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-2019-35 in support of CACR8 local self gov, government.
Second.
Did you want to discuss?
Should I read it first or, because I wanted to make a couple of changes, but?
Just if you want to make changes, suggest the changes. You know, we've already read it into the record, so.
Okay, so assuming that there's no, no issue with this, I'd like to make just a couple of changes. In the first whereas, final line, for our town to adopt stronger regulations and controls outside of those previously set by the state, semicolon, and. I'd like to strike stronger and then in the final whereas, I'd like you to read, whereas the New Hampshire General Court has considered the adoption of CACR8, which would amend the New Hampshire Constitution to allow municipalities to adopt locally specific ordinances for the betterment of their community. And then to the, now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council to support the effort of expanding the rights of municipal governments and being able to govern according to their needs through the adoption of CACR8 and other like legislation. So a couple of reasons for proposing just making those minor changes. I wanted this resolution to not come up as either being forceful or trying to push a particular message outside of what CACR8 is proposing to do, which would be allowing towns like ourselves to better tailor what we think would work for our community. So, you know, the state's saying, these are the minimums, New Market's saying, we need to go a little bit beyond that or maybe have a, you know, more watchful eye on how we handle things in our town. And for the final whereas, just that has considered the adoption of CACR8, so when I was speaking with Monica this past week, the New Hampshire General Court has not taken any action to adopt CACR8 at this point. Go ahead, Steve.
Just pulling up the bill of history. It was voted an expedient to legislate on the 19th.
Yeah.
Which ITL means, it's a polite way to say it's dead.
Exactly, so no longer currently considering, they have considered and obviously not taken any action. I, I mean.
It's true dot.
It's dead.
Yes.
Yeah.
Forgive me, I'm still not familiar with that.
Yeah.
So, if that's dead and this So, if that's dead, and this isn't, is, this is proposing to support what this, they will do at the state level, what do we do with this?
Your call. And that's the thing, I wasn't expecting them to kill it either this quickly or in general, because it sounded like there were more folks who were on board with this.
Mm.
Um, the reason that I brought this forward was because this was seen as perhaps one of the actionable items that we could do as a town to support the efforts and goals that were brought forth by the answer group, and what we as a subcommittee kind of felt would, you know, show that we're open to, you know, their, what they had in mind in terms of allowing New Market to take greater control of how it wants to run outside of what the state says, you know, we can't do because we're a Dillon's rule state. I brought this forward for us as a council to make a stand on, but if it's not appropriate to adopt, I wouldn't expect us to adopt it. I gave you a thirty-nine-page packet to explain everything that we went through, how we got to our decision, the reasons that were put forth by Steve, um, Attorney Ratigan, and, you know, the members of the community who are active, so. I'm.
Well, the last clause is other-like legislation, so it leaves the door open. I think the, maybe the question for the council is whether, as a council, we do support those sort of amendments to the state constitution that would allow towns to have, to, to pass RBOs, and there, you know, and have that level of control over what happens in towns, so.
There's a, a s- always been a standing, um, policy of the New Hampshire Municipal Association, so all the cities and towns, to support what they refer to as a home rule amendment to the New Hampshire Constitution. So it'd be switches from the Dillon's rule to the home rule state. Um, which basically says if the law is not banned, then we can do it. And, um, I think that's more of a blanket one, which we all do support, and it's, we already are on record supporting it. Uh, any amendment to the constitution that allows that.
Ho- how are we on record?
Supporting it by a home rule amendment.
But I mean, how?
Oh, the Municipal Association.
Through the municipal, so by belonging to the.
By belonging, go to the policy meetings annually, and we have a representative vote.
Uh-huh.
At the slate. If we didn't, we could vote against it, but that's always one of the standing policies of the Municipal Association.
So if it was a home rule, would we be able to do RBOs? Is it that type of blanket, or is it just more?
It's.
It's a different mechanism?
I don't know if we would be able to do a RBO. Um, I ju- I just don't know the legalities of it. But it, because I, I don't know if there's already something banning it in state law. So that'd be the, the question.
Okay. So I have one other change to propose. I don't know if we're deciding now, or I propose the change now, or what's the sequence?
I guess my question is, do you wanna go, i- if, is it gonna move forward, and if it doesn't move forward, do you wanna do the changes?
I mean, if, if the council wants to vote on this, I suppose that we can. I don't know what, I don't know what good it will do, 'cause there, there is, to my knowledge, is not any other, um, like legislation this session, so I, I don't.
And you can't. You, once one fails, you can't have a similar bill in the same session.
Right, so.
Do we table it then?
No, because you'll have a new session in between.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Just thinking through the options here.
I mean, I can s- so, to back up just a little bit, uh, my thoughts about a couple of things is, one, that the, um, packet that Counselor Dumont put together was, um, comprehensive, and I think, um, I, I just thought it was great to see all of that information. We had months of work that we did, uh, as a, as a subcommittee. And, um, I appreciated you putting all of that information together for the subcommittee, so thank you very much for that. Um, as far as, again, you know, I was on the council at the time, and then, and, and then participated in the subcommittee, and my thoughts on the RBO, and I know that this is not what this is, but yet that's the underlying reason for this resolution, um, I don't support it, so. Um, and I, and I don't support it, not just because of the attorney, of what Attorney Ratigan, uh, presented to us, but for other reasons as well. It's not something that, um, I, I support for our community, so. Um, so I know that I'm not in support of this resolution either. I think that if it were more of a, more of a blanket, um, switching from, uh, Dillon's rule to home rule, I would feel differently about it, but that's not what C A C R eight is really about in my mind, so. Um, so I don't support C A C R eight, and, um, therefore I don't support this resolution. So I don't know how people wanna proceed. I mean, it's also, it, it, it's moot, because it just doesn't, uh, you know, there is no C A C R eight, um, to support, so. I'm open to however the council wants to proceed on this.
I think that's kinda where I stand with the fact that it's, it's now moot. I think acknowledging the efforts of the community and, and supplementing what the work of the, um, the water, water rights subcommittee, right?
Yeah.
Uh, I think there's a lot of work, and I think that detailed packet does kind of acknowledge the, uh, concerns of, of, uh, the group that brought the concerns forward, but being moot at this point, I just, it seemed kinda pointless at this point in time.
And Zach, thank you so much for, um, all that information as well, because that has really helped me kinda dig in a little more with how it was proposing to work, and unfortunately, I am not as, really in support of the RBO itself, even though I know that's not, but again, since it's, you know, kinda consensus here, since it is moot. But thank you so much for putting all that together, because that was a lot of information, so.
And just, don't get me wrong, I, when I found out it was put down, I didn't know what to do with the resolution, because I intentionally postponed it until, because I didn't wanna vote on our previous meeting, where we had two new counselors who hadn't been given the, the opportunity to actually explore and investigate before they casted a vote, so. But, if we're not in favor, by all means.
So would our options be for, um, Counselor Dumont to withdraw the resolution, or?
You could withdraw it, or you can just vote it down.
Okay, which, yeah.
It'd probably be easier for the record just to vote it down. If that's the wish of the council.
I'm guessing that it is. I'm not seeing any opposition, so, um, do you wanna call the roll, please?
Counsel Finch.
Nay.
Counsel Sanders.
Nay.
Counsel Dumont.
Nay.
Counsel Kuiper.
Nay.
Counsel Cass.
Nay.
Counsel Burns.
Nay.
Counsel Weinstein.
Nay.
Motion fails, uh, seven zero.
I did, I did have a question about the packet.
Of information.
Yeah. Uh, the subcommittee had also recommended that that be shared with our representatives. What's the mechanism for that?
Oh, if, I mean, we can send it to the state reps.
Now that it's, we have it ready.
Yeah.
I didn't want it to fall off the cliff, because we had recommended that it.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I forgot about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Would that be up to the subcommittee to take care of it?
We can do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, next on our agenda is, um, appointments, um, and nominations, and so, let's see, hang on, just a second. I would accept a motion to appoint Michael Provost as Cemetery Trustee for a term to expire March twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to appoint Michael Provost as Cemetery Trustee for a term to expire March twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Administrator, please.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Cass.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And I'll accept a motion to appoint Rochelle Sharples to the Veterans Memorial Trust Committee for a term to expire March twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to appoint Rochelle Sharples to the Veterans Memorial Trust Committee for a term to expire March twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any comment? Oh, I'll just say for both of these, um, applications, these are people who have served in the community for, uh, many years, and, um, I thank them both for their service. If you wanna call the roll.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Cass.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Alright. So, um, resolutions in the first readings, we have resolution twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen dash thirty-six, withdrawal from the Technology Capital Reserve Fund for electronic message boards. Whereas the town of New Market wishes to increase its communication services, and whereas the town wishes to install electronic message boards in town hall to display notices and important information. And whereas, the town secured a proposal from Stimuli Sight and Sound of Dover, New Hampshire, to install three message boards and the appropriate hardware. Now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council that the town council authorizes the withdrawal of six thousand dollars from the Technology Capital Reserve Fund to purchase the system. First reading, April third, twenty nineteen. And then we have one more, resolution twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen dash thirty-seven, rescinding of the town's current development restrictions on Lot thirteen at Moody Point, and replacing it with new restrictive covenants as set forth by the Nature Conservancy. Whereas the town has been in discussions with the Nature Conservancy on behalf of Walter Chaney, the current owner, and the Moody Point Community Association about the long-term conservation of Lot thirteen for several years. Whereas it has been determined it would be in the best interests of all concerned if the long-term stewardship and management of this significant environmental resource be vested with the Nature Conservancy for the benefit of the town of New Market as set forth in the attached Declaration of Restrictive Covenant. See attachment. Whereas the New Market Planning Board, at its meeting on March nineteenth, twenty nineteen, has approved this revision to the revised final site plan for Moody Point. Modified the environmental management program for Lot thirteen, and recommends the rescinding of the notice of development restriction, and replacing it with the proposed Declaration of Restrictive Covenant. Now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council that it authorizes the town administrator to rescind the notice of development restriction as found in a document dated July one, twenty fifteen, on file at the Rockingham County Register of Deeds, Book fifty-six thirty-two, page six eighteen, and replace it with the proposed Declaration of Restriction as set forth by the Nature Conservancy for recording at the Rockingham County Register of Deeds simultaneously with the conveyance of Lot thirteen in its entirety in fee from Walter Chaney to the Nature Conservancy. First reading, April third, twenty nineteen. And that's it for resolutions. Um, any correspondence to the town council?
There is none.
And then closing comments by town counselors.
Um, I just have one thing I just wanted to mention. Um, over the weekend, I attended in Manchester the, um, New Hampshire Police Association Pipes and Drums event. So it was a pretty, um, it was a pretty great event. Um, it was a lot of fun, but it was, it was just amazing to see the pipes and drums, you know, play and everything, um, and it, it was just wonderful. But during the event, we, there were several speakers, and one of the speakers mentioned that New Hampshire, I believe she said, third safest state, which I thought was pretty great, so I just wanna kinda say thank you to all of the police officers in New Hampshire, but especially to our New Market police officers, so. And if you ever get a chance to go, I highly recommend it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the, uh, article in Municipal Sewer Water on our, uh, department, and there, it was pretty much a glowing, glowing article, just totally complimentary of the level of, um, expertise, achievement, excellence, uh, and ability to, you know, I, I, the main takeaway I ca- came away with was that we have a small town, but we have a department of, that is functioning on a city level. I mean, they are playing big league ball. It was a well-written article, too, which did, did them service as well, so it's very easy to read, well-written. So, if you can find that link, do we, are we gonna put that link on the town website?
The other day, I'm gonna do it again.
Yeah, if you wanna see where your tax dollars are going, and how much value you're getting for them, right there, read that.
Our water and sewer department is pretty amazing, and Sean Gregg, um, is, I think, a real asset to our community.
Yes.
For sure. In so many ways, you know, it's, I mean, besides the fact that he is able to manage the whole system, he is also so diligent about making sure that he's applying for grants and doing everything as cost-effectively as possible. So, we're really lucky to have him.
With vision.
With vision, yeah.
Real vision.
And then I had, uh, just a couple of quick things to kick out, maybe. Um, parking has come up, obviously, time and again. People complain about it, and we, we've, we thought and had discussions on it. Um, I, it's pretty clear, I don't think we can really add parking, but perhaps consider ways to, uh, tweak and adjust some rules and regulations that we have. So I've kinda been kicking around some ideas in terms of, uh, possibly the drag down on extra road, maybe seeing if there's any other way to add some spots, whether it be diagonal parking or whatnot. Um, possibly considering, we kinda have the, the, kinda the winter parking ban from November to April, uh, which we could reconsider maybe to, uh, just for snow emergencies. Um, that might make, 'cause with warmer weather and, and things like that, it might make sense to free up, you know, so there isn't that full-time ban. And then, uh, another idea that came up was potentially, currently we have, uh, it's five dollars per day to park, uh, basically like overnight, and I was considering, uh, mentioning maybe do free up to twenty-four hours, and then do five dollars per day. Um, I looked at the revenue that we bring in from parking, and out of well over ten thousand dollars, there's only about two hundred of that that comes from the five-dollar, uh, parking charges, so it wouldn't necessarily lose us much revenue. Um, and then I was able to, uh, someone mentioned, uh, getting our parking lots on Google Maps. Our parking lots are now on Google Maps, just to help direct people to those locations, so, but just some things to kick out.
Just one thing we've considered is, um, a possible part-time enforcement officer.
Wha- what's the, uh, where's that stand?
We're still talking about it.
Um, somebody had suggested maybe seeing if someone from Durham could do it, since they would have substantially less traffic in the summer, which is when we would probably need someone.
I'll, I'll talk to the chief, see what we can do. We, we, we don't wanna have somebody that would be a, you know, a full-time individual because of retirement and benefits. Um, however, if we could find somebody seasonal, we're looking at our options.
It wouldn't need to be very many hours a week.
Yeah.
It wouldn't need to be more than five or ten.
Usually, it's, as soon as you start, people realize it's going on.
Yeah.
So.
I also noticed a little while back, I don't know how long they've been there, maybe they've been there for years. Um, but there's a, you know, the blue parking signs, um, pointing to the Bay Road Lot.
Yep, we put those up as soon as we took.
Recently, right?
I would say, yeah, well, once we paved it, we put it up.
Oh, so not that, okay. I just noticed them like two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that that's important, because we've talked about that in the past. Directing people to, to the other, um, alternatives for parking is important, so.
I had a one small item. Back a long time ago, when I was, um, you know, just a wee, uh, college freshman, one of the, uh, kind of pet passions of mine was looking into, uh, bee health in the United States and across the world, local pollinators, and how, you know, human activities have been affecting that. Obviously, there's, there's been a lot of data out in the past few years about how, um, you know, bee populations, insects as a whole, but are, are really kind of suffering from our activities. And I think that New Market has a lot of great conservation areas that are just these perfect little gems that might be helpful to potentially, if we're to partner with a local business, to maybe, um, have apiaries posted, or, or use some of these public lands that, um, we have the pleasure of going out and exploring to host some local pollinators. And I wasn't sure if there'd be any interest with the council, potentially looking into this, or maybe a committee wanted to take it up and reach out, but it's, something that's been on the back of my mind.
It's conservation land, the Conservation Commission governs conservation land, so it'd have to go to them.
Yeah.
We, we have no say.
I, I, I understand. Um, but I just wasn't sure if maybe there, there might be some interest in potentially exploring that. So I, I think that, you know, when folks come to New Market, they really appreciate the beauty that we have, both, you know, the natural, as well as, you know, our, our Main Street, uh, district, but I think that maybe we could, would. But I think that maybe we could put some of our parks in our land to, you know, another beneficial use.
I can bring it up to conservation, because I know that with, and obviously it's not fully complete yet, but with Schott Meyer Park, the, the entry garden area is supposed to be just full of like pollinators and those type of plants, so that could be kind of a basis perhaps for other conservation lands. But I can, I can bring it up next meeting, next Thursday.
Yeah, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's happened or it just happened, there was a, a talk at the library about beekeeping.
It was very-
Did it just happen or it's?
Week or two.
Yeah. So, and the, the name of the person who I happened to see on Facebook, who was promoting it, is escaping me at the moment, but that might be a really good contact too. Clearly a beekeeper.
Okay.
So, and then I had one, one item, and that is that it's now that it's April, we're talking about roadside cleanup. And this year, the Newmarket Cares Day, which was spearheaded by Patty Marsden at the Newmarket Community Church, and the roadside cleanup are joining forces. And so, we're actually going to have two days, and it's Newmarket Cares is the name. And it's May fourth, which is a Saturday, from seven thirty to four. And then May tenth, which is a Friday, from eleven to four thirty. And the reason that there's, there's, the Friday came from last year, it was Newmarket Cares Day, because it's a half-day of school, at school, and so there is a lot of student interest. We have a large, a couple of large groups of kids who do community service. So, what we did is we partnered with the town and different properties, like Shanda Park and the library, the Tiger House around there, did some cleanups in those areas, and then also private residences that were primarily came from both Saint Mary's and the Newmarket Community Church. And so, people who just needed some assistance, it was mostly outside work, but inside work is also acceptable. There's, you know, whether it's painting or, you know, helping somebody clean up their yard, whatever it is, they can be in touch with, with the group from Newmarket Cares, and it's newmarketcaresday@gmail.com. Posters are going to be going out, I think some probably have already gotten out, but we'll be putting up posters around town and on social media, so that that information is out there. So, that email can be used for people who are looking to get assistance or people who are looking to give assistance. And there'll be like a sign up, a digital, Sign Up Genius is the platform, so a digital way for people to sign up to volunteer. And whether you have an hour or a full day or two days, whatever it is that people can contribute. It is a great opportunity. I've participated in, in both, obviously the roadside cleanup and then last year with Newmarket Cares Day. And, I mean, the, the litter, and again, like now that all the, the snow has melted, I look, you know, I drive down Ashland Road every day, I drive down Grant Road every day, and it makes me crazy when I see all the bottles and cans along the side of the road. And so, it's such an easy way to like take half an hour or an hour or more and make a huge difference. So, so please, spread the word, and that's all I have. So, if there aren't any other-
I just had one quick thing, I don't know who did it, but somebody painted, repainted the Tiger Station sign.
It's a, it's a brand new sign.
It's a brand new sign, okay, I'll just add it. Who, who took care of that?
We did.
Was that just a town thing?
Yep.
Sweet, it looks great, and they're going to be open for the marathon.
Yep.
So, if anyone wants to go check it out.
Yeah, it does look really good. The whole building looks good. I mean, that's something that was, been on that list of, for the facilities.
I took a run, it like stood, it like really popped when I was running fast.
I think they did it last Friday, I drew, it was around downtown.
So, if there aren't any other comments, then I will consider us adjourned. Thank you.